Assalamualaikum semua orang. Terima kasih telah bergabung dengan kami hari ini. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Tuhan yang mempunyai alami dan salat. Assalamualaikum, saya Muhammad wa Ali, sahabat semuanya. Terima kasih telah bergabung dengan kami, baik pagi atau sore. Kami harapkan Anda akan mendapatkan manfaat besar dalam webinar ini tentang pemerintahan dan pemimpin. Hari ini. Saya hanya ingin mengambil sebentar untuk mengingat semua tentang SISNA dan apa yang kita lakukan di sini. Itu adalah, telah menjadi tujuan kami untuk membawa sekolah bersama-sama dan memberikan praktik terbaik dan petunjuk. Dan salah satu hal yang terasa menakjubkan yang terjadi untuk kami dan untuk sekolah di sekitar negeri dengan pandemi adalah bahwa itu sebenarnya memindahkan kami untuk berkumpul bersama-sama. Dan sekolah Islam bekerja bersama-sama seperti yang belum pernah dilakukan sebelumnya dalam sejarah negara kami. SISNA berada di depan dari itu, mulai pada bulan Maret. Membawa webinar dan petunjuk dan informasi selama proses dan memberikan apa pun yang diperlukan oleh sekolah kami selama pandemi. Dan bahkan melampaui pembukaan sekolah, kami dapat memberikan praktik terbaik dan praktik bersama dari sekolah dan pemimpin sekolah. Kami ingin terus menyediakan sekolah kami di sekitar negeri dan kami membutuhkan dukungan Anda untuk melakukan itu. Jadi hari ini saya ingin mengingatkan Anda bahwa SISNA telah ada di sini selama dekade dan kami benar-benar dapat menunjukkan manfaat dari memiliki organisasi di tingkat nasional selama enam bulan yang lalu. Dan saya yakin bahwa setiap sekolah Anda telah mendapat manfaat dari webinar dan informasi dan sumber daya yang kami berikan. Jadi kami meminta Anda pada saat ini untuk benar-benar dukung kami sehingga kami dapat terus mendukung Anda. Dan itu sangat sederhana, jika Anda belum menjadi anggota, silakan menjadi anggota SISNA. Dan Anda dapat pergi ke link kami dan Siswa Sophia dapat memberikan itu di chat pada suatu saat. Jika Anda belum menjadi anggota, silakan menjadi anggota SISNA dan juga mendaftar untuk akreditasi. Dan melalui akreditasi, kami dapat membantu Anda untuk terus menggunakan praktik terbaik dengan petunjuk standar kami dan membantu institusi kami dengan keterstetan. Dan kami melihat dalam beberapa bulan yang lalu lebih dari kapanpun, bagaimana kami harus mendapatkan institusi kami melalui waktu yang paling sulit.
And the last thing that you touched on was about having honesty and trust. And I think what makes SISNA unique here is that we're able to facilitate resources and training for not just governance and nonprofit area, but for Islamic schools. And what I love about how you mentioned about trust and how important that is, when you look at research done by authors from the 1980s on in the Leadership Challenge, you could see that the number one characteristic of an admired leader, that leaders are looking, that people, followers are looking for is honesty. That's it. And it hasn't changed since the eighties. And it's always the top choice, Subhanallah. And that's something that we have to think about when we connect it to Islam, right? Because other sorts of professional development may focus on general governance, right? But we're talking about as for Muslim organizations. And we have to think of, remind ourselves what the, the name, the nickname for our Prophet Muhammad ﷺ was, right? Asadah al-Amin, right? The most trustworthy one. This is even before Wahy, right? And starting the prophethood. And also you talked about humility, which is another part. And we know that Prophet Muhammad ﷺ said, "Man tuwada alillahi rafa." Right? So whoever is humble for the sake of Allah, Allah will raise them. So InshaAllah, I hope that Allah raises you and your organization and helps you achieve that amazing goal that you have in mind for your organization. So thank you so much. The next presenter that we have coming up is Dr. Hunam Chowdhury, who is the Chairman of the Board at the Islamic School of Greater Kansas City. So thank you very much, Dr. Hunam. We're looking forward to hearing about your experiences as well.
Salaam alaikum. Thank you very much for inviting me for this wonderful occasion. And let me see if I can share my screen.
All right, we can see your screen now. Looks great.
Okay, I, I actually focus on, on just on the, on the Board of Directors or the management of the school. Because that was the topic. And so I will, uh, so my main stress will be on that. But if I have to talk another, if there is a question, I will be happy to answer those also. So the management, we see that the school management is actually all the Board of Directors of the school. And, and my focus is actually our nonprofit organization, not for profit. Like Islamic school for the communities. Yeah. So the, the Board of Directors are usually elected, but they should be elected actually under the staggered terms. So the continuation can actually stay there. We, we have the structure like two board members are elected every year and two are leaving every year. So, but they can come back, they can rotate. But the, and so that is what actually gives the community as a trust on the board that they have the choice every year to, to kick them out, to members. And the two member can actually be new elected if they are not satisfied with that. And the principal should not be voting member on the Board of Directors, but principal is a member of the meeting. PTC Chair, PTC is a very important component of the actually Islamic schools that, and their chair should be voting member on the board. The reason is that if you're not giving them that power, they are not going to actually contribute to the, to the school affairs. And so we have very active PTC and they actually do a lot of activities for our, our students and, and staff. Okay. Findments of the BODs, okay? Three, three categories through election, through selection, or selection for life, okay? The top priority through election actually is the best one, my experience, okay? Twenty-five years working with the Islamic school. And the other twos are, everybody knows what the problem will be, okay? They will not be able to earn that much trust for the community if they are not actually accountable or they are not put accountable every year or every other years for the elections.
Hunam, pardon the interruption. I don't believe your slides are transitioning on our screen here, so we still see the title. I believe you are progressing through the presentation. That may help people follow along.
Okay. Can you see that now?
Yes, we see the qualification slide.
Okay.
You just did that one, right? Or you're on that one now. Thank you.
So here I was, so diversity in the, in the, in the school board. Let me give you the example what we have actually. We always maintain diversity. We are Arab and non-Arab, biggest community in Kansas City. Half of the board members are Arab, half of the board members are not Arab, okay? That's our preference actually. Although we trust each other, but this is a fact, okay? Then the, the selection should be highest caliber people on the board. Because we are giving future of our generations in their hands to make decisions. So our board member is actually, we are six elected every year, sorry, two, two every years, okay? And two leaving. And two are the actually department chairs. I'm Computer Science of Aqshika Department Chair, forty years teaching experience at the university and just retired. This is first semester. I have a Department Chair for Business School, okay? And I have Vice President of IT Company. I have engineer for EPA. I have engineer for a, the, for, for the communication company. And we have another one who is accounting expert. So if this diverse actually population of the board actually allow the, also to grow the diversity among the students, what areas are important and focus of this, they should be able to manage that, okay? So boards should earn the highest possible trust of their community through transparencies and their working and policy. The trust of the board is very, very, I put over here, earn that, that they have to earn it. Because if you are not actually highly trustworthy, the students, the, the community will not have actually full confidence on you and they will not be there to support you. And so your growth of the school can be impacted, okay? So that is actually, when we elect the qualifications of the board, we, we can see there, yes, commitment to Islam as a total way of life, active involvement in the Muslim community, should have at least a bachelor degree, okay? Experience in the field of education are related. Participation in Islamic activities must be US citizen and permanent residents. This is not actually a simple thing, that if you put any kind of visa person that they don't have that much interest with a permanent person living here, looking for future of the kids. Working of the boards. The board members are the principal officers of the school and they work closely in coordination with the school principal. Board is responsible to set all the policies, make decisions, appoint the principal staff to run the school in highly professional way. BODs ensure that all activities of the schools are accordance with the constitution and bylaws of the school, okay? School board should communicate with the community, keeping them up to date about the current and the future challenges of the school. Communication is very, very important. School board should be abiding by their state and federal regulations on, on the education, okay? So that is their also responsible. Conflict of interest. Election committee must be, no member should be actually eligible to be contesting if they are a member of the committee. No employee and immediate family members, spouse, children, parents, brother, sister-in-law shall be eligible for election to the school board. BODs should keep themselves transparent from the employees of the school. Here is that no board member actually should communicate directly to the teachers or the staff without the, going through the principal. So not undermining the authority of the principal. All the communication with the school employees should be through the school principal. So the school principal actually is there onsite, has a hundred percent power, okay? Now, what should be the role of the chair, okay? Chair should be elected every year, every other year, whatever the bylaw says. Chair should set up BOD meetings, agendas, chair should be, should delegate the responsibilities, not hold all, everything on his basket or her basket. By making various committees among the boards, defining their roles clearly. And then honor the working of outcomes of those committees. If you're not honoring their work, then they will lose the interest and then, and actually they will not be working with that motivation on those committees, okay? Committees, for example, can be any type of, but this is example, teacher training evaluation, teacher appointments, principal evaluation, okay? Budget to finance, employee contracts, records, management, scholarship, okay? Fundraising, maintenance, always. So it can be, these are a few examples. The chair role actually is big, okay? Teacher training and evaluation, what is needed for the principal? Quickly, actually, we were doing, I invited from the, from the UNRWA and chairs and the vice chair of T. Sitting one period in that.
Pardon the interruption, Dr. Hunam. It looks like our internet connection is a little bit weak. He may have just disconnected, in fact. Nope, is he still here? I see he's not sharing his screen now.
I'm wondering, William, if perhaps we can move to our next presenter, just for the sake of time, InshaAllah, and we'll get back to him or.
Yeah, InshaAllah for the Q and A. I'd really like to follow up with him as a board chair to hear more about his experiences, in particular about developing the relationship with the principal. I think that would be very, very helpful to hear.
Are you able to see now? I don't know what's happening over here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Sometimes the internet. Dr. Hunam, we're at about our time right now.
Okay.
Could you, could you finish? I see you're talking about as a, the board chair. It would be great to hear your perspective. So could you tell us just briefly in a minute or so about how, how you develop the relationship with the principal at the school?
The, the principal is actually, we, we have given the principal full authority to execute the, the guidance and the, and the principles and the decisions made by the board. And every month, the principal bring back the report that what happened when he or she. At the same time, board is fully supporting the principal, okay? We are never, so the teachers should know that the principal and the board, they're working hundred percent closely, close collaboration with each other, and we trust each other also, okay? And so otherwise, the teachers, some teachers can take advantage, make the principal's authority very, try to minimize that. No, no board member directly also communicate with the teachers too, okay?
Great. So you're saying that communication, really your relationship is with the principal as board member.
Principal, if you're not making principals strong, okay? The, the, the management of the school will go loose, okay?
Definitely.
And the chair is responsible also to attract, work with the, with the principal to attract the quality teachers, qualified teachers throughout the year, because you can. I said with the principal to conduct the interviews of those teacher, sign the, sign the contract. Then we have the annual evaluations.
Yeah, it looks like Dr. Hunam, your, your internet is cutting, cutting out again. I could see that you're talking, but I can't hear you unfortunately. Let's, let's go ahead and, and hopefully InshaAllah, your internet will, will come back and will be more stable as we go. Just to let your internet take a break, let's, let's go ahead and transition to our, our next speaker. And then for the Q and A, I think our, our participants would love to hear more about some of those points that you're making. So thank you very much for, for everything.
Thank you. Sorry for that. I don't know what's happening here.
That's okay. We're all used to it. We're all educators. This is our life now, right? It's, can you hear me? You're on mute. So thank you. Jazakallah Khair. Let's go ahead now. We have our, our final Board Member Presentation right now, who is going, is going to be Brother Ikram Sayed, who is the Secretary of the Board for Brighter Horizons Academy in Garland, Texas, which I believe is in the Dallas area. So Brother Ikram, go ahead and start sharing your screen when you're ready. And thank you so much for joining us.
Jazakallah Khair, Brother William. Let me go ahead and share my screen real quick. All right. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Salaam alaikum, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Welcome. Thank you all for taking the time out of your Saturday morning to join us today. We very much appreciate your interest and your attendance. My name is Ikram Sayed and I am the Secretary of the Board of Directors for Brighter Horizons Academy. Alhamdulillah, BHA has been involved with SISNA for a few years now. We've been affiliated with SISNA for a few years now and we are honored to be on this panel. And I myself am honored to be representing the one and only Brighter Horizons Academy. A little bit about myself is I am a BHA alumnus. I attended Brighter Horizons Academy from first through 12th grade. It had an everlasting effect on my life. It gave me, you know, not only a moral compass that was rooted in faith and Ardeen that guided me through college and my career thus far, but it also gave me a very strong support group, you know, friends, family, community members, staff members who all wanted to see us succeed. So Alhamdulillah, I'm extremely grateful for attending an Islamic academic institution. And I hope that, and I know that the rest of, you know, attendees for BHA and all the Islamic schools around the country feel the same way. After I graduated Brighter Horizons Academy, I went on to pursue my Bachelor's and Master's Degree in Engineering, in Environmental Engineering specifically. So I am not an educator by trade and I will talk more about why that is important later in the presentation. And Alhamdulillah, I've been lucky enough to join the Board of Directors for Brighter Horizons Academy at the beginning of last year. So just to kind of set the stage, before we go into the agenda and details on today's discussion, the overview for BHA, we've been around for thirty years. We have over seven hundred students and the goal is to have a thousand students, InshaAllah, in the near future. Our vision is that we will want to be a model Islamic educational institution that produces generations of leaders who are successful in this life and hereafter. Our mission is to develop practicing Muslim leaders who are lifelong learners that serve their diverse communities and global societies as respectful citizens. So the reason why I put the mission and the vision statement here is because that is a part of the SISNA accreditation process. We'll talk more about what that means, but it's very important that us as board members, we know the vision and the mission statement. In this case, we contributed to the updates for the mission in the vision statement. And I'm happy to say that I did have some minor edits to our vision and mission statement the last time we looked at it a couple of years ago. Alhamdulillah. So moving on, today, the highlights in the agenda of what we're going to discuss, how, and this is directly from the flyer for the presentation, how does a board recruit to be diverse and representative? What are the best practices for the principal-board chair partnership? And how do boards gain training? And lastly, what is the journey like for a school seeking SISNA accreditation? So the path to the Board of Directors and recruitment. So I myself am a product of this recruitment. I am much younger than my colleagues on the Board of Directors for Brighter Horizons Academy. And I think that it is extremely important to have not only age diversity, but ethnic diversity in the leadership team and also in the Board of Directors, so that every demographic is represented or is represented and has a voice. There are many ways that we do this and there are many ways that we've been successful in our local community at implementing this, which are shown here. And I'll talk more about what each of these are. So the first is our shura meetings, which are community involvement meetings. And so these used to be, unfortunately because of COVID, they've become virtual, obviously. But it used to be a community town hall every quarter where we would get together on a Sunday morning, have breakfast and we would talk for three to four hours. The governing bodies would give a presentation, the school leadership team would give a presentation. And then the shura or the community would join in, you know, comment, criticize, question the presentation. And so that was very beneficial because, you know, one of the members, one of the key members of our governing body calls the shura a think tank. Because we have the chance to contribute, we have the chance to scrutinize, we have the chance to question some of the things, big, from a big picture perspective, question some of the big picture decisions that are being made. And it makes everyone feel empowered and it makes everyone feel like they have a voice. So that I think is very critical to any community to get, you know, the engagement from all of your stakeholders. The next thing is parent workshops. We know that, you know, there's always hesitation with doing these. There's, there are opinionated parents from time to time. So we kind of shy away from doing parent workshops too much. But there are definitely silver linings to doing parent workshops. And from a recruitment perspective, what it helps with is when you do have an opinionated parent or when you do have a parent who has a lot of ideas, what you can do as a board member, as a leadership team, is challenge them to champion their ideas and challenge them to use their passion to dedicate more time to the school and, and volunteer for the school. So there is usually a silver lining that comes out of these parent workshops. And just to tell a story real quick, I'll never forget the first, the first parent workshop I attended. It was after we made an announcement to slightly increase the tuition. And so we went into the meeting, obviously, a little bit nervous with the reaction that we were going to get from our community. It was a long meeting, there was lots of questions, there was a lot of tension. But what came out of the meeting were a lot of great ideas from the parents on how, you know, we can diversify our revenue streams as a school. And then a lot of parents volunteering to contribute their time and their ideas and to champion some of their ideas for BHA, which we thought was fantastic. So what really seemed like a nerve-wracking meeting at first turned out to be a great way to involve some of our parents. The last is alumni engagement. This one is pretty tricky, in short, because most alumnis who are my age or a little bit younger, they, they just don't care. And it's very hard to get them to want to care. And the alumnis who are a little bit older are, you know, starting their families and becoming parents. And so they're very preoccupied with that. So the responsibility for alumni engagement really falls back on the people who are currently involved. The, the leadership team at the school, the current board members, the current shura members, they need to reach out to alumni, empower them, make them feel like they can make real changes. And then, believe me, they will come in flocks. I can personally testify to this, because when I started to see the results of me attending shura meetings and asking questions and taking on, you know, initiatives and doing things like that, it really empowered me. And now all I do is try and beg my friends and other community members to attend shura meetings and to get more involved. So the next discussion point is the ten best practices for the principal and board chair partnership. I can't speak to this for too long, because I'm not the board chair or the leader of our principal or the head of our school. But I can speak to some of the things that I have seen from a third-party perspective and what works and doesn't work. So a lot of these have been discussed previously by our other presenters. And I just want to highlight some of the things that each of these items mean and what they don't mean. So transparency and open communication, very cliche. We've heard it throughout, you know, the multiple presentations. But to me, this means the willingness to invite parents, the willingness to invite staff members and the willingness to invite former students to board meetings when appropriate. That shows that you, as the Board of Directors, are not, you know, in this ivory tower and there is not a distance between you and the rest of the community and that everything isn't hush-hush and everything is happening behind closed doors. It makes, you know, establishes an open door policy. People feel like their ideas are heard, they can ask questions and they can escalate things to the highest governing body of the organization. Open communication is minimizing backdoor communication between just the Board of Directors, between specific members of the board. And I myself, you know, I, I, I'm guilty of doing this from time to time. If I do fall behind on something, I find myself texting and emailing just the board. And something that I think we do very well at Brighter Horizons is that our chair always directs me to the staff members responsible for my line of questioning. And that empowers them, it shows them that he trusts them to communicate this with another board member and it avoids any miscommunication. Trust and collaboration. Again, pretty cliche, I can tell you what this does not mean. Trust and collaboration does not mean micromanaging your leadership team at your school. It does not mean second guessing every disciplinary decision, every academic decision that, that is made. That results in a very unproductive environment as a school and it is very difficult for the board and the school to get things done, if that is the case. So we as board members have to, especially like myself, if you are not an educator by nature, you have to trust and give the autonomy, like Dr. Chowdhury was saying earlier, to your principal, to your leadership team at your school to allow them to make the day-to-day decisions and run the organization. We as a Board of Directors have to focus on the big picture. We cannot get lost in the details, otherwise it's just going to be dysfunctional and a highly unproductive environment. So collaboration, in, in short, what that means, some of the other present, presenters talked about this. Forming subcommittees is something that we do often and I think it's very successful. And what we'll do for our subcommittees is we'll combine and we'll have a mix of board members and staff. And sometimes staff are designated as the leaders of a certain subcommittee. So in that specific instance, the board member is reporting to a staff member, which is a very powerful message to the rest of the school and to the community that we trust this staff member to guide us in this specific instance and we trust their ability to lead us. And it creates a much better discussion and a much better perspective from the outside in. Distinct roles and responsibilities, this one is pretty clear. Some of the other presenters talked about it. It really just avoids duplication and it avoids rework. And so there's not much to discuss there. So how do boards gain training? So for me myself, I'll tell my story. In the interview and onboarding process, the training has to start early, okay? When I was interviewed, it was made sure that my character values, my motives aligned with the vision and the mission statement of the school. It was made sure that I was not doing this for personal or political gain. And once, you know, there was that confirmation and that initial trust developed, then, you know, you can feel comfortable with bringing on somebody to your Board of Directors and electing somebody into your Board of Directors. Onboarding, again, your first few meetings as, you know, being a part of the board, it should, these should be very big picture discussions. This is how it was for me. We talked about strategic goals, we talked about the vision for the school. We talked about five-year plans, ten-year plans and what we want the school to look like and, and what some stretch goals were. So big picture discussions during onboarding is very important so that everybody gets on the same page early and that there aren't any major disagreements. Because again, that will lead to a very dysfunctional environment. Training should be very simple from that point on. So some of the context guidelines from SISNA that, I'm just going to read verbatim here, that help us with our training is that the governing board members receive orientation and continuous development to reflect an understanding and a commitment to the Islamic faith. So the way that we implement that in our board meetings, very simple. I'm sure that everybody does this. You start off with a dua. You start off with a dua to remember why we are doing this. We are here to, to serve our Creator, we are here to serve our community. And it is a humble reminder and it sets the stage for the rest of the discussion. And then finish off with a khatarah that is relevant to what was discussed. Give an example from the, from the Prophet's life on how he dealt with certain disagreements or how he dealt with certain decisions. Give an example from the Quran on how to manage these types of things. And that is continuous development for us as the board and also as the leadership team. Webinars like today, again, very easy way to continue the training process and to make it simple and to make it productive. So the last thing is, you know, what is the journey like to achieve SISNA, Advanced Ed and IB accreditation? This slide, especially IB accreditation, could have been an eight-hour workshop and it would have been best given by, you know, our staff at BHA who spearheaded this effort. But just from the BOD's perspective, we need accreditations in many ways, shapes and forms. It is a form of legitimacy and recognition for us as a school. And so in my humble opinion and in BHA's humble opinion, it is always worth the investment because there's always a silver lining that comes out of the accreditation process. It tends to be sometimes a, a long and arduous journey. You have to document everything, you have to make sure you're implementing things consistently across the organization. But in doing this, there are many lessons learned. You will make sure that all of your staff know what the mission and the vision statement is for the school and that, that is the guiding factor, same thing for the board. And so unfortunately, and, and there are always, there are always challenges associated with this. So one of the specific challenges faced at BHA was, again, reading from SISNA's context guidelines, is that the Islamic Religious Studies curriculum is based on clearly defined expectations, standards and measurable goals. So Arabic, Quran and Islamic studies, the standards for that didn't exist a few years ago. So we had to develop and implement these, Alhamdulillah, we developed them and now what we're going through is holding ourselves accountable to the standards we have developed. So whether the results are good or bad, we have to take them and, and help them or use them to help us implement a path forward so that we consistently improve over time. Another one that is a little bit difficult is that, you know, the staff receives ongoing orientation and training and basic Islamic knowledge and understand the school's religion and philosophy. So like anywhere, you're going to have some staff who may be more conservative, some who may be more liberal. But as long as we document and do our due diligence in making sure that, you know, we are implementing these and we are continuously training them on our school's religious philosophy, then at the end of the day, that's all that we can do and the rest is in Allah (ﷻ) hands. And so the last thing that I want to discuss, and I know I'm probably running out of time, is IB. So Alhamdulillah, we are still in the process of our IB accreditation, the next step is MYP. There was a lot of challenges, but it has been an extremely beneficial process for us as a school, Alhamdulillah. I personally feel like from witnessing, you know, some of the workshops and some of the, you know, the learner profiles and understanding more about it, that it has significantly increased the quality of education at BHA. And specifically, I feel like it helps us with other accreditation, SISNA, Advanced Ed, Cognia. Because as a, as a institution that is religious by nature, having a program where all of the learner profiles are supposed to align and there is a bigger picture really helps us make sure that we are instilling the right values and, and the right character traits in our students at the end of the day. Because we are a Islamic institution at the end of the day and these are the values that we want to implement in our school. So thank you so much for your time today. I will now open up the floor to questions, this is my contact information, if anyone needs it, please feel free to ask me any questions after today, but I'll pass it back over to Brother William.
Jazakallah Khairan, Brother Ikram, thank you very much for your, your presentation. A couple of things that really stood out to me, one of the points you made was about the diversity of board members. And Dr. Hulam had mentioned diversity and ethnicity, which is representative of the community. But you also mentioned something that's really important and often overlooked is diversity and age, right? And I think it's really for many, especially younger Islamic schools that are just now being, getting to have a larger alumni pool, it's really an inspiration to see a graduate of the school serving as a board member because you can provide a really amazing perspective on where the school is going, moving forward. I also like the idea of challenging it through your parent workshop idea, challenging parents to champion their ideas, as you said, so really it's about channeling that intention to help and actually giving that responsibility and working with them to implement some of those improvements. And also the training that you mentioned as well, and I appreciate you connecting those to the SISNA standards, which Inshallah, our intention is as we go through the months is to talk more and more about how the SISNA standards are really designed to support Islamic schools in addition to the more secular accreditations like Cognia that may not focus as much on the board development that is relevant to us. So thank you very much once again. I'd now like to turn it over to our final presenter, Sister Najwa Ozgur. And Sister Najwa, Mashallah, is, is the founder and executive director of Merit and the founding school head of New Horizon Pasadena in California. She has many, many credentials, we could go on for quite a long time with her bio, but she's led her school to a blue ribbon recognition from the Department of Education. And what she's doing now, she's providing Islamic schools with board training, principal coaching, accreditation, school establishment, development, evaluation and consulting, especially in the area of best practices for board development. Sister Najwa, now that we are getting close to the, the hour at 12:55 and we were hoping, Sister Najwa, with all your expertise, if you could, maybe for the next about 15 minutes or so, 10 to 15 minutes, kind of summarize what we've heard today and connect it to those points that you'd like to present. And after that, Inshallah, we will turn it over to the questions. Right now, we can see that you started the screen sharing, we can't hear you right now, Sister Najwa, but we see that you, the presentation may be coming up.
Should be coming up, but maybe I'll ask Sister Sophia since she volunteered in the beginning to screen share with me. Sophia?
Yes, I'll do that, Inshallah, hold on just one minute.
Okay, Bismillah, rahmanir rahim, thank you very much. It is a wonderful group of people and may Allah reward you for all your efforts. And I'll ask Allah to help us in this session to give me the opportunity to present my thoughts and my ideas and for you to take it as some recommendations. And Inshallah, Allah will help us. So I have been, after working with the schools for so many years, I start focusing on the board trainings. And my information will be coming from the, from the National Association of Independent Schools and also from the board source. And these are the two, two major organizations. And basically, what we learned is, can we, can we go back? Okay. Basically, John Carver, I don't know if you know him, he wrote quite a bit of books about the, the nonprofit governance. He says, "No single relationship in the organization is as important as that between the board and its chief executive officer." You know, in our case, chief executive officer is the principal. And from my experience, I see many, many schools, they are suffering because of the, the relationship between the, the board and the principal. And my goal is to share some of my thoughts today so you can, you can see the, what we can accomplish in that regard. Sophia, let's move on. Sophia, okay. Leadership for nonprofits, leadership is having a vision for the organization and ability to attract, motivate and guide people to achieve that vision. The leadership of a nonprofit organization is fundamental to its success. However, I'm just going to raise my hand, Sophia. Sophia, can we move? A leadership team in the boards is very interesting because usually in the organizations we see one leader on one leadership team. But here what we see is the board leadership and the principal leadership. And sometimes this causes some friction, some problems. Board's leadership, the board has ownership of the nonprofit organization and board chair usually leads the board. And the principal leadership, the board delegates its authority to the executive director or the principal to carry out the day to day responsibilities of the organization. The executive director or principal leads the staff. So in these two elements, what is important is one is leading the board, the other one is leading the whole organization. Let's move. The high performing nonprofit is that product of a board, high impact governing board and high impact principal. So when we see a successful schools, we know that there is a strong, high impact governing board and high impact principal. Who work together as a cohesive, strategic leadership team. So these are very important elements to keep in mind. Sometimes we see finger pointing and it is the principal didn't do it or the board didn't allow us or whatever. But what we are seeing here is a teamwork that both of them are working together and we get the best results when both of them are working in a high level. And so we need to just work on both. Sophia? Today we heard from our board members, experienced board members, some of the things that it is important. And it is, again, this is one of the topic that is discussed a lot in the nonprofit world. So let us see what the research is telling us. 10 best practices to strengthen partnership between board and the principals. What is the, what is the first one? Number one is, some of you mentioned before, the clarity of roles and responsibilities. This is so important. And it starts with, the principal has a written contract which defines the scope of his or her accountability and performance evaluation process. Sometimes we get excited that we just see someone that who's qualified and we just want to hire this person, but we need to think that, how is the contract going to be? How is the evaluation process going to be? How is the accountability? If I'm going to be interviewed for a role of a principal, I want to be sure that these are kind of covered in a written contract. And the board has written documents clarifying roles as a whole board also. Individual board members, board chair and committee chairs role is clear. I heard today, some of the boards are taking lots of responsibilities. If you are doing that, it needs to be written and very clear by the principal. Some principals, they love it, it is like the, my board is helping me, they are helping me with the interview, they are helping me with the budget, but the others, they don't like it. They feel like this is my area of responsibility, I want to do it. So the, just to take care of that problem is clarifying roles and responsibilities. There is not a one way of doing things, but definitely it needs to be clarified. Before the new board chair takes office, the principal should suggest a discussion about the expectations. What do we expect from each other? Aside from reviewing their formal job descriptions and protocol of their interaction, two leaders may want to craft a communications and accountability pack. And this is really important. What I'm suggesting here is not only the principal has the job description, but the board members, they also have a job description. We need to know what is the responsibilities of the board chair. We need to know what is the responsibility of the treasurer. We need to know what is the responsibility of the committee chairs. Yes, let's move on to the next one and we'll keep the questions to the end, please. The second one is, again, it was, it is mentioned before, mutual respect and trust. Treat each other as equals rather than subordination to a hierarchy. Sometimes because the board hires the principal, we feel that that's the highest authority. Well, the way that these top organizations, nonprofit organizations and advisors to nonprofit organizations, they look at it that there is this equals rather than subordination and hierarchy. That's really an important understanding. Teamwork, trust and shared understanding among board members and principals crucial for a successful partnership. Keep all sensitive matters relating to governance, operations and treatment of one another ethical, professional and confidential. In public forums, the board chair and principal positive about each other. They are committed to make each other successful. In closed doors, we could criticize each other, we can talk about what didn't work well and what we should be doing. But in public forums, it is always recommended that it is, we give a front that it is always together. Address issues with an open mind in an open forum to permit discussion of all different points of views. But again, when it comes to criticism and the problems, then we need to kind of do it in the closed doors. Let's move on, the third one. Again, open and honest communication, one of the recommendation I highly give to all the boards and principals. Principal and board chair meets regularly, which means in my book, it is weekly. To review the hot issues and to prepare for monthly board meetings. In my case, I used to meet with my board chair, we used to have jumma prayers and one hour before the jumma, we will meet and I will prepare a bullet items, what's happening in the school. It is almost like a FYI. And if there are certain things that he or she feels that it should come to the board, he would kind of give me an advice. But he is always aware of what's happening with the third grade teacher, what's happening with a parent number eight. It is always, he would be informed about what's happening. He will kind of guide me, what should come to the board. Both communicate frequently via phone call or email to alert each other in a timely fashion about the potential problems and the actions. If something major going on in this school, it is, the board chair should know. And if he feels this is a board matter, then he would kind of take it to the board. Answer emails promptly, even if it is to say, I'll get right back to you, don't let issues faster. I see quite often, the problems comes before because it is the, the principal keeps so much into herself or himself as the problem solver. But then board, when they find it out from outside, they will get upset. During the meetings, maintain the professionalism by staying, organizing, talking less and listening more. And, and create a culture of respect in the boardroom. It is the board chair's responsibility. And some boards are really very professional, the others are sometimes toxic. They talk really very bad to each other and it is, this is not what we want to see. The rule of no surprises is very important. No one should surprise the other in the boardroom and surprise the, the, the rest of the board members or the principal. Let's say a board member who hears that there is a major issue with a third grade teacher should not bring it just like that in the board meeting. If there is such case and the, the board chair should be informed and board chair should be the person who's breaking the news to the principal and most probably principal knows that there is an issue and she would put a report or she would kind of give the details if it is needed in the board. Some boards are very careful not bringing all the, the administrative issues to the board, not to take from the important time of the board. The others, they want to hear every little detail. And most of the time, it is just, it should be enough, if there is a trust between both parties, just to say that it is, I'm handling, I'm aware of it and I will be informing you in the next board meeting what the results will be. So it should be enough when we are kind of trusting each other. Sharing bad news is never good, but it is the, the, the principal, if she carries all the responsibility in her shoulders and the board hears the information from outside, they might start losing the trust on the principal. One of the things that I would, we had an agreement with my board chair is, I asked them, what, how much do you want to know? And he used to tell me like, tell me as little as possible. But if I'm going to hear anything from outside, let me know ahead of time. So this was our agreement. It could be your agreement or you could have a different kind of an agreement, but it really worked for us. Working together towards the big picture, developing a passion for the mission. This is one thing very important and a couple of you mentioned that when you were hired as a principal, when you were hired as a, the principal, it is the mission was something very important. And this is really something that I would put the mission statement in front of the, 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 the person I will be hiring and I will be asking. That's not only for the principal, but the teacher or even families we are involving, enrolling their children to the school. I want to be in the same page. If we are not, we are just pulling from different direction. Passion for the mission is essential to building shared decision-making and commitment. Again, some of you were discussing about the board member. It is like, how do we find the right board members? The right, right board members to me is the people that they have the same vision or similar vision. What we need to do is, mission in mind. When we are, when we are making the decision, mission always need to be in, in mind. Wild balanced budgets and we put such an important on that, the board can only make an impact when the focus is mission-driven. It is, we need to have a school mission-driven. We are in the west coast, as you know, we used to have people coming from east coast. And I used to interview them, how did you decide to come to this school? They used to tell me, because of your mission. And, and then I used to get also phone calls from people telling me, sister, your mission is really good, can we borrow it? Mission statements are not borrowed. It is something that you create. And when it is important to you, to your community, the words that you put in your mission statement and you focus on that. Common understanding of where are we going, how we will get there, how we will know that we arrived, is these are the common questions the board should be answering. Not the minutia that it is, it is always takes time off the board. So it is, we need to really focus on the mission. Let's move on to the next one, planning together. And this planning together also, it is going to show us that the board chair and a principal plan for strategic planning and annual planning together and they ensure the action items are followed. Let me share a little bit of information about the strategic plan. Strategic plan is done with the whole community, board and the, the, the principal and parents and the community members for five years or 10 years. And then after you have the document, most of the time, people just put it in the shelf. What we like to see is you take it and bring it to every board meeting. And from that strategic planning, you will have your annual planning. Annual planning is your one year of agenda. The board chair and the principal plan for successful board meetings and they develop agendas jointly. The board chair and principal work together to ensure committee chairs are effectively prepared. The board chair, the governance committee chair and principal define value-added board development activities and actively strategize on their perspective. Roles and ensuring the desired outcomes are achieved. Let's move on. Annual goal setting. This is something that I would really recommend very highly before even the school starts. When the teachers are getting ready for their schools and the board chair and the principal will also set the annual goals. Goals help to provide the roadmap for the school leadership and the progress report for the board to consider when evaluating principal and the board. Usually I get a calls from people asking me, how do, how do we evaluate our principal? Or how do we evaluate our board? If you did this goal settings, it is kind of a very important tool for you to set the goals beginning of the year and then end of the year to see that how many goals you achieved and what are the unachieved goals. In fact, I would recommend some of you, you, you talked about the transparency and inviting parents to meetings, it's a wonderful idea. What I would even add to it is, beginning of the school year, you will share with your community, with your parents, these are the 10 goals we set for ourselves for the next year. The principal has these eight goals for the next year. And then end of the year, you invite them again. And that time you tell them that, well, we achieved seven out of 10 or eight out of nine or whatever. And then you will move the unachieved goals to next year and add to it. This way, when we were talking about gaining the credibility and the trust from the parents or from the each other, you will really gain it. Because you are showing to people you are transparents and you are, you are including them in your plans. All the board goals, principals, board chairs, committee chairs, annual goals are considered board's annual agenda and set the tone for the year. This is really something I will recommend very highly. Yes, Sophia, let's move to seven. Annual evaluation of the principal and the board. Annual evaluation process is one of the essential steps in creating climate of trust. And usually, when we talk about the evaluation, we talk about the principles. However, I'm going to recommend that it is, it is not a one-way street. It is, we evaluate the principal, but we also evaluate the board. And again, it is, this is, believe me, one of the questions that I, quite often that I get, how do we evaluate ourselves and it's who is going to evaluate us? I'll tell you, the board is the highest level in the school. So it is, and there is no one is going to evaluate you. And then I even used to joke that Allah will evaluate you. So it is, again, it is something that you need to do to, by yourself and it is not that difficult. If you set your goals, you just sit down and look if you achieved your goals or not. And what we used to do is, just give the paper to the, all the board members. And one of the, the paper has 10 roles of the, 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 the board members. And then you kind of check there. How many people checked that it is, they are short in certain areas? And we do the same thing for the goals. If you do these two papers, basically you self-evaluated yourself. And these similar tools are for the principal also, to fill and for herself and for himself. And then in the end, you kind of sit down together and you kind of go through the points together and see what are the areas that, my experience is, when we sit down with a, a principal and if she did her goals and assess herself with her job description, it is mostly very similar to what we put same things as a, as a board chair. Board chair will kind of sit down and do the same thing for the principal. And when you look at it, it is in one or two areas, it is, you have a different view. Most of the time, if people are honest, it is the focus areas are very similar. So, but it is, you should not miss a year without annual evaluation, both for the principal and for the board. Next, please. Commitment to excellence and continuous learning. And as you know, in our schools, we have the, the trainings for the teacher, trainings. We encourage the principal to go to professional meetings and read journals, join learning online forums and conferences, workshops. We would like to see the same thing is happening with the board. You are showing a leader, as a leaders, what you believe, what it should be done in your school. And then somebody mentioned about the orientation sessions. Orientation is very good, onboarding is very important. And it is throughout the year, we need to do something for the board to move. That should be one of the goals and you should be assessing yourself, what did you do this year? There are, there are some points that I could give you, it could be done easily. And there are some things, it is kind of like, it takes someone from outside to provide you some trainings. But the simple things that, one point, I did a create, a crate in the boardroom, that was all the board books, it is written by the board source. I bought them and I put them there. And then the board members will kind of take one and read it and come and share with the rest of the board members. That used to be something very, very important. And it's almost like you are creating your own experts. People are learning certain things and sharing with everyone else. And anytime that we send any board members or teachers for training outside, they need to come and give the training to others too. So this way, we were kind of growing together. This way, we are going to have a professional board. Develop the board to become more effective. The board chair, principal and governance committee chair together assess the current and anticipated needs of the board composition and develop a profile of a board as it should evolve over time. One of the things that it came up, it got my attention is, how do we have a diverse board? And diversity is not only from a background, national background. It is also diversity on knowledge, diversity on skills, diversity on age, diversity on male, female. So what we provide is a profile. You create a profile, if you have six board members, you put your six members there. And then if you are looking for six other board members, you put the next side there. And then you start looking at, what do we have, what do we need? What do we have, what do we need? That would give you a great opportunity for you to know where are you and where do you need to go. Board chair, principal, government, one of the important committee is, in that matter, is the governance committee. Governance committee is made of, it is from experienced board members. And they have quite a bit of knowledge and experience and they kind of sit down together with the principal and the board chair. Start looking at what are the things we need to do for our board. And this is something very important. And in that matter, it is, one of the things that it over, quite often asked about the boards is the committees. How many board committee we need, what are the committees? There isn't a very clear number or the, the committees that you need to identify. How you would identify how many committee members you want is from the strategic plan. Your strategic plan is going to show you. In next, in next five years, we are going to find a new building. It is, you need probably building committee. If you see in your strategic plan, it is, we need to put a board development plan, probably governance committee is going to be very important. If your finances is not going well the way you want, probably you are going to put a finance committee. If you need to have quite a bit of fundraising, probably you need to have a development committee. And this is usually the, the very important part of the committees. And when we are talking about, where do we get our board members? The committees, they have a, a committee chair from the board and then they have other members from the school community. So the, when you are going through election, you will ask the committee chair, who do you recommend? Because people are easier to, to get into the committees. And if they are not performing well, it is easier to not have them again. But board members, it is very difficult. There are certain board members, they will be upset with you and they would not send their kids anymore because it is you kind of, not select them again to the board or something like that. Anyway, what I'm recommending is, the committees are the place that you would have, you will build your future board members. One of the things that is very important is, no school is not, not going to have any crisis. Commitment to handle crisis professionally, effectively. This is the time when start people finger pointing each other. Power of partnership is tested when the principals comes under attack. When the, the, the parents are attacking your principal, it is the easiest, but the worst thing you could do is just to say, oh, principal didn't do it. Or if something is happening and coming to the principal, oh, board didn't do it. This is not showing a group of people that they are together and they are sharing the, this leadership in a best way. So the ability to handle crisis together and calm, measured and dignified way is a hallmark of a strong board. These are signs of dysfunction of the partnership. Multiple messages are disseminated from individual board members and the principal about the direction of the school. This is something, again, there was a question about the, about the, with the COVID, it is like, what are we going to do? This is one of the important thing. This is something that you need to form probably ad hoc committee, talking about the things that you would be doing and the information you will be disseminating to the community. And this is the, when the different information going to the community members or in a different time even. If some of the parents, they have the information earlier than the others. So what is the best thing is, you form your committee, you start talking about what are we going to do, how are we going to do that? What is the decision that we are making and who is going to disseminate this information? It is very important. It is not always the board chair, it's not always the principal, but it might be board chair or a principal. Different work groups move in a different direction and they do not communicate or consider the big picture in pursuit of their goals. And this is something, it is, we always need to keep in mind. And there is a strong tendency to finger pointing inside and outside the boardroom instead of working toward collaborative actions. These are something that it, it might be helpful in today's COVID situation. Let's move on. These are basically the, the 10 best practices for principal-board partnership. It is something that we did go through it, so I'm not going to, to waste time. And then, this is in summary. Effective and healthy board-principal partnership start with mutual trust and respect, open and honest communication, clarity about roles and responsibilities, a rule of no surprises, responsibility to support each other and demonstrate that support publicly and privately. And disagreements should be resolved behind closed doors, praised publicly, criticized privately. And this is also something very important, authority is vested on the board as a whole. And as a principal, nothing is more stressful than in one day, three, four board members coming to, to his or her room and saying the same information. You need to decide as a board, who's the spokesperson? And that spokesperson could be the, the board chair or if the board chair assigns it to the vice chair or a secretary. It should be one person and it should go to the principal that way. I had a board chair, every morning he, he would just stop by and then he would say to me, it is like, I heard about the third grade teacher, but I'm sure you are doing something about it. And, and then that's it. He will leave. And that's kind of a, a relationship that build on trust. He trusted me and I trusted him. So it is this way, he knows that I'm doing something about it, but just in case, he is bringing to my attention. Confidentiality, both by principal and the board members need to be respected. So these are the, the, some important points. I'm sure that there are lots of questions. If you need, if we have time, we could answer some questions.
Thank you, Sister Najwa, thank you so very much. Do I have your permission to share the slide deck with our participants, Insha Allah?
Yes, sure, please.
Okay, so, and I also wanted to ask the other presenters if you are okay with it. Please give me the permission to share your slide decks and I will do that. And also, if you could share your contact information, since we've had many participants ask if we, they could contact the presenters with some questions that they, that they had.
It is, on my presentation, in the first page, I have my email. And that's the, the best way to reach me, my email address there.
Okay. And if the, and the other presenters, they could just.
Welcome to ask me any questions, I would be happy to answer anything I can.
So I know you covered most of the questions. So I know you covered most of the questions that have been typed into the chat already. There was one that talked about the criteria for board membership. And I know you said it has to be people that are aligned with the mission of the school. But I, and I think you mentioned it, but just to, I wanted to just add, it's also a factor, what is, what are the needs of the board? If you could speak to that a little bit, Sister Najwa.
Exactly. I had one presentation and it has the points about the board members, what do I look for? And it is, of course, number one is someone that, who has a good character. And a person who is going to create a chaos in the school, even if they have the best qualifications, I wouldn't want that person. It is someone who has a good character, good personality is very important to me. And then the second thing that I would say is that someone who is really believing in the mission statement. I had one time, one board member, he had lots of issues with the Arabic program that we had. And it is, again, it is, our mission was very clear in, regarding to Arabic. And it is someone who is coming and had something in, in his mind differently, is not going to be fitting best to that environment. If you have a board member who has a good qualities and but the different agenda, that should be discussed when that person, before he or she comes to the board meeting, a board membership. Of course, somebody mentioned that he's not from an education field. It doesn't have to be education field. I mean, our educational expert is our principal and her or his team. So we really don't look for experts in education, but we look for experts in, in, according to the school's needs, in business. It could be in managing the board and it could be in according to the strategic plan. It is whatever our strategic priorities, we need to have people that they are fitting into that area.
So one of the other things that relates again to the board makeup is election of the board of directors. And we know that sometimes we talk about board members selecting from themselves or with nominations coming from the parents. And there were some schools who are talking about having each family member or each family get a vote. Can you speak to that part?
Yeah, I think it is the, the organizations that I'm very fond of. These are nonprofit experts. And they all talk about electing your board members by board members. It is again, sitting together, looking at your profile and looking at your strategic plan. What are our priorities in the next few years? What kind of a person do we want? And then start coming up with the candidates. And those candidates, most of the time, the best if it will come from the, the committee chairs. So what I would do is one session of a board meeting and everyone will talk about, you know what, we need in the next few years and such and such quality people. And then that's one thing. And then the second thing you would do is you ask your committee chairs and who are the people that you would recommend as a board members? So that will be the second thing. And the third thing is again, sitting as a board and kind of looking at the, your goals and your priorities and coming up with the kind of a profile in your mind. And those people will be interviewed. And then if they fit to the expectations that you have, you will hire them. I really, from what I learned from those experts in the field, what I learned as for the school, getting people elected. But by whom, I, how are you going to? Sometimes the masjid elects, sometimes it is kind of like, there will be four, five people elect. I think it is not the best practices. The best practices tell us that you be in charge. You will do a good job of getting a good candidates and they will be interviewed and they will be tried as a board members. So that's what I would be sharing. I know that it is not a very common practice in Islamic schools, but I believe that it is the, the best because of the, these organizations with their research, with their experience, that's what they are recommending.
I also wanted to ask some of the, of our presenters to speak to board evaluations a little bit. Self evaluations, getting, doing, conducting surveys to ask your stakeholders to have some input on how they feel their board members doing. Have you done anything like that? What have you found to work well? Did you make changes based on the value, board evaluations that were done, you know, through your, through a self evaluation and also from stakeholder feedback? Sister Ekra, if you wanted to speak to that?
Um, yeah, sure. Well, we've done some, not internal, I guess, board evaluations, but we have done like where we've asked our stakeholders feedback. We've definitely asked our staff. We have yearly staff climate surveys as well as student surveys, which is not really for, I guess, regards to us. But I mean, it gives us feedback as to, you know, how are we doing? And how is, you know, the climate at the school? And sometimes I think in the past, we have seen where there is, you know, teachers don't feel supported, you know, by the board or there's like some disconnect and we're able to kind of see, okay, we need to repair that relationship and need to know how to fix it. So it does help us to do that, to get the feedback.
Brother Kram, did you have anything about your experience from your experience?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Most of the self evaluations we do at this point are informal and it's mostly, mostly through the head of the school. If she feels that, you know, staff or parents or anything feels some sort of way about the board, we will do our best to readjust and respond to those concerns and questions. We haven't formalized the process, but I think it would be beneficial to do that just so I can look back on my performance for the 2018, 2019 school year and improve it. So it's a, it's a good idea, definitely, Insha Allah, to implement in the future.
Okay. Dr. Qalam, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, that, we don't have a specific process for that, but our election system is very strong that every year two members are leaving to new or entering. They can be actually again elected. But annually, we have a town hall meeting in the March, every March 3rd Sunday. We have a town hall meeting in which all the parents, teachers, students, anybody can actually show up and we will be presenting the whole year performance, accounts, everything in that meeting. And we will get the feedback from the community.
There's a couple of hot topic questions in the chat. And yes, I, we've seen, as assistant of board members, we have seen, especially when we've conducted visits and I've been to many schools throughout the country. These are, these are definitely concerns when the principal is not selected by the board or it's, there's some issue with, you know, who does the principal report to and who selects the board members? And I'm actually wondering, I know we're getting close to time and some of you, if you have to leave, you have to leave. We'll continue, well, I'll, I'll keep the meeting open. But I think maybe Sister Leila, if you want to maybe address the questions that have come up or go on?
I actually, thank you, Sister Sufia. I think we, we might want to take a step back in the process. Like in the hiring of the principal, one of the things that a lot of our schools sometimes fail to do is, is really put together a hiring committee that actually is able to hire a qualified principal that's in a committee is made up of different stakeholders. If the principal is hired through the right process, then you're more likely to get a qualified principal. And therefore, there isn't this interference of this relationship between the board and the principal may, maybe start off a little bit better. The bigger concern is sometimes if the board is now dysfunctional in a school, how do, what do you do about it? Like this question about when board members elect from each other and, and how do you prevent corruption or having board members stay on forever? Sister Najwa can probably talk about this also is what bylaws are in place? What, there has to be a process, a, a, a formal written process on how you bring board members on. And there has to be a process of renewal. It can't be the same people for 25 years. And it can't be someone new, just, you know, these are my friends. I'm going to invite someone I know. Because then again, that, that prevents the diversification of thought, not just gender and ethnicity and age, but you need people with different ideas to come to the board. Sister Najwa, how do, what do you, what do boards do if, if they're not as functional as they need to be right now? How do they fix that in order to move forward?
I think one of the important thing is to have the governance committee. Governance committee is like an internal safeguarding element. It is made of experienced, well-trusted, respected people. And I remember in our community, we have some people that we always used to go for an advice and those people are part of the governance committee. And so you kind of empower the governance committee and they need to be also trained. They need to know what are they looking for. Let's say if the election is not being done right, the governance committee is putting the plan together, how to do the election. And again, we are talking about not bringing, oh, this is my friend, this is the best person. And but bringing kind of a resumes of five, six, seven candidates and looking at it together as a board, looking at it and kind of thinking that what do we need? What is missing in our board? That's a very important question. If you created a profile for your board, what do we want to have? And I have some schools that they are all male board members. I have some schools that it is their, they don't have the expertise it is needed in the board. We have some school boards, we have to have like a three generation serving in the board. It is the younger generation, elder generation, they have much more experience and the middle age. Middle age usually is the one that they are going to do the work. However, the, the younger age, it's going to bring some new fresh blood and the new ideas. And the older generation, they are going to bring in experience. Anytime we had a financial difficulty, older people, they used to remind us that it is like, we started this project with $10,000 and even that bounced in the bank. And so kind of like bringing stories that to encourage us is very, very important. So looking into that and looking at the governance committee, it is kind of a, almost like a highest authority in the board that they are kind of tweaking the things and kind of looking. Otherwise, it is bringing from the outside, this person or that person. Let's say I hear sometimes imams. So if Imam is good and he could be a good person to lead all these problems, you could have the Imam serving in the governance committee. And so he will bring his wisdom, he will bring the religious examples to the governance committee. But other hand, it is just bring some board members. They have the experience and they know what is that board needs. And most of the time, we do need, know what is needed, but it is either we don't have a power or we don't have a authority to do anything. And so, or we want to be popular. It is kind of like sometimes we need to be courageous to make certain decisions that not everyone is going to like. And so anyway, what we are looking for is a board who trained itself to be, to deserve that highest authority level. And that's kind of, to me, it cannot be better than that. It is, if you give the authority to the parents, what do they know? It is like they are, most of the parents, they look at their children's benefit, which is normal, natural, but it is not always same. It is third grade parents, what he thinks is the best versus ninth grade parents' needs. So you cannot just leave it to the parents' hands. And I, we seen it quite often, they bring five, six, seven parents to vote for whoever they are looking for. That's not the best. So I really trust the organizations that they have a years of experience and years, when I talk about it, hundred years of experience, went through all the challenges and coming up now with some recommendations.
Sister Najwa, I think you're, you hit the nail on the head with the National Association of Independent Schools. A governance board is, is important. And I don't know that many of our schools have that governance committee. And it doesn't have to be very large. I know at our school at Nour al-Iman, it's only three people. But they, they were members of the community for 10, 15, 20 years and had served on the board for a long time. And they don't play a very active role, but they're there to ensure that the board functions properly. And they oversee the nominations of new board members and the elections process. But it helps maintain a, a stable board as well.
Yeah, I think they need to look, when you start evaluating yourself, you are going to start seeing what are the areas that you have shortcomings. And somebody mentioned about the bylaws. Definitely, bylaws is a formal document. You could be in trouble if you don't follow it. It is something that it is really very, very important. Lots of people, they say like, in their bylaws, if you miss three meetings as a board member, you are out. And then you look at the minutes that you see that they missed not three, five board meetings and what happened there? And so it is, if you put something in your bylaws, you need to follow it. Because it is going to come up in your minutes. And I seen that, it is when we were accrediting schools, definitely you see, you see lots of realities that people are saying, but then minutes are showing you it is the otherwise. So anyway, bylaws definitely is something, a safeguard and it is very important. You need to follow it. I have here question that I'm seeing that what if you selected the right board members in few, few months, they become less involved? And who is in charge of the board? What did we say in the beginning? Who is in charge of the staff? Is the principal. Who's in charge of the board? Is the board chair. So usually board chairs, they don't like me to say this, but it is as a board chair, you are a disciplinarian also. One time I was telling to one of my board chairs, it is like, you know, this person didn't come for five board meetings and you need to talk to him. And then he tells me like, oh, he's my friend. It is like, I didn't come to this board to discipline people. No, if it is your responsibility, who else is going to do that? If someone is not coming to the board meetings, you call him and you tell him that you have a responsibility, he needs to come next meeting. And one time, I'll share the story all the time because it really hurt me. We were having an Arabic day in our school and there was, I was serving in a national board. And we used to meet like two, three times a year and you cannot miss a meeting. So it happened to be, we had the Arabic day and I cannot leave school when there is an Arabic day. So anyway, I apologize, I didn't go to the meeting. And a few days later, I got a call from the board chair. He said, it is, we needed you in that meeting and you missed the meeting. I said, yeah, it was kind of like, he said, it is, I'm sorry, but we need people that they can serve this board. If you cannot, maybe you can leave your seat to someone else. I was so embarrassed. But it, it taught me a lesson that that's why that board was functioning in a very positive way, very good way. And everyone attends every meeting. So the board chair, I'm sure he didn't like that, but it is kind of like he had to do it. So anyway, I think there is a question about the Islamic schools that are relatively new in America. It seems like most of them, I can, I understand that. There are some schools that it is just few years old and they are not going to be able to immediately move into the highest level of the board. That's why I have a presentation about the, the levels of the boards. It is like, some schools, they move on faster to the higher level. Some schools, they cannot, high impact boards. But we are aiming to be there. And to be able to do that, it is kind of like we get the training, we got evaluation, we see what is missing and so we try to move ourselves to a higher level. But if you just sit there and just, this is the reality of the Islamic schools, nothing is going to change.
Sister Najwa, on that topic, as Islamic schools, we've been able to bring together our school principals and they've done an amazing job of networking and sharing best practices and helping each other grow. We haven't had that level of engagement from board members and that's something we'd like to see is that as we provide the next few webinars, which are geared towards board members, we'd like to see them. we'd like to see them attending the webinars and engaging with each other and networking more. We also created WhatsApp groups for networking. And we see that the teachers, we have hundreds of teachers networking, hundreds of principals networking. And we don't see a lot of activity in networking and conversation among board members. And to this point of how do you invigorate board members and how do you improve their practices? Board members have to engage more with others outside of their school to learn about, you know, what is good, what is the best, what are mistakes other people are making? What can we learn from other schools, Islamic schools or otherwise? So maybe that's something you can encourage your boards and if your principals and your boards are not here, really push them to become more engaged with other members in other schools.
Yeah, what you are recommending is wonderful and it is, you know, we do every once in a while, talk about the COVID and the problems that we got with the COVID. But one of the benefits that I see is these webinars. Because it is always difficult to bring the the busy board members to conferences. And we did quite often some workshops and it was not that successful. Today is, to me, is very successful and we could do more of these. And in fact, we could communicate and maybe SISNA will take a lead to put a list of board members and then asking them questions, what are the topics that they would like to be seeing that it is addressed? And then I will be very happy to have a very similar format of today or even more, we could do question and answer, we could do lots of things. And so just to reach a higher points with the board. Let's say we, one of the question came and we couldn't address as much as we wanted to be. The committees, to me, it is the committees are the heart of the board. And unfortunately, lots of committee work is done in the board meetings. And it is every committee brings their issues to the board meeting. That's not the way it should be. The way it should be, committees needs to meet and discuss certain issues and come up with the recommendation to the board. Board will make the final decision and with the given information. But bringing the committee issues, every committee has half an hour, one hour in the board meeting, then it is really, we are not able to address the real governance issues. And it is, we are just focusing on the the problems that it is coming up.
So to the question of of board training, the next few webinars that SISNA is offering are all geared towards board needs. There are some financial sustainability, the accreditation process and the governance standards, which are linked to the board and principal relationship. So those will be sent out by Sister Sufia, our executive director. But I think it we, it would be good for us to do a survey. So if if members join the WhatsApp group, board members, we would like to send out a survey to our boards and gauge what their concerns or needs are. And hopefully, Sister Najwa can help us in providing trainings or a series of webinars geared towards whatever comes from those surveys. And it can be a step by step process that we can walk boards through, moving to the next level of of professionalism, Insha Allah.
Insha Allah.
So the question about, so if you're a SISNA member, if you're not already a member, you need to be. If in order to really develop our schools, we really need to become parts of professional organizations. And SISNA is the leading organization for our schools. When we look at other private schools, they are members of their state associations or national associations. And the more membership we have, the more resources and information we can bring you. So Sister Sufia, at the beginning, put a link to our membership application. And then there's a link to the WhatsApp group of board members. So we ask you to join both of those. But you can also reach out to Sister Sufia, again, if you would put your, where they can reach you at the email address and she can put you on a list where you can get more information. But the next few webinars are going to be on financial stability and finding resources other than fundraisers to fund our schools and one on governance and accreditation, Insha Allah. Sister Najwa, thank you so much. Your wealth of information.
It is my pleasure.
Sister Sufia?
I don't know if anyone else would like to say anything who was on the panel or if there are any more questions. I really appreciate everybody staying on for this much time. I know we're all pretty zoomed out throughout the workdays. So it's it's great that you're able to to join us and stay on for the whole session. We will send a, we will post a recording of this on our SISNA YouTube channel. And I do encourage any of you who are not, whose schools are not SISNA members, please become members. As for the communication, the WhatsApp group is great. We have one for school leaders, which would be principals, administrators and so forth. We have one for Arabic teachers, one for Islamic Studies Quran teachers. And then we have one for board members. So some of you who only received the information about this webinar because your principal received it is because that's the only contact information we would have at SISNA. So joining the WhatsApp group would be one way. Or if you want to put your email address in the chat, if you're not already getting emails from me, then that's another way to make sure that you do get timely information. But we will post this on the SISNA YouTube channel, Insha Allah.
Okay. All right, Jazakumullah, everyone for joining us. We're going to close out now and Insha Allah, you'll have access to the webinar and the PowerPoints after the the session is complete. Give us a couple of days and and you'll have that posted, Insha Allah. We're going to close out with a dua, Insha Allah. Subhanakallah wa bihamdak. Nashar la ilaha illa anta nastaghfirka wa nathuba ilaiq. Aaudzubillahi min shaytaan wa rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wal asr inna linsana lafi xasr illa ladzina amnu. Wa amalu salihat wa tawasaw bil haq. Wa tawasaw bil sabr. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.